And actually, the wrong agenda that's set out, this was kind of my working one. And when I finished, I attached the wrong one. So I apologize. It's a little wonky, but that's the reason. So with that said, we'll start off with the Honolulu Fire Department. Do we have a representative from the Fire Department here? Hearing none, we can go to the Honolulu Police Department. I see Lieutenant Segucio here. So Lieutenant.
Hello, everyone. Lieutenant Segucio from the Honolulu Police Department District One area of community. I just wanted to wish everybody a Happy New Year and hope everybody's, everybody's New Year's was happy and uneventful. In regards to that, I'm just gonna go straight ahead and get you guys the stats. So the motor vehicle thefts for this month of, or the past month of December, twenty twenty-three was eleven. From the previous month, it was five burglaries. It was four. Previous month was same, it was four. Thefts were three. They're down from the previous month with seven. U M Vs or car break-ins were seven. Previously, that was three. Assaults were zero. Previously, that was one. And then sex assault graffiti and drug cases were all zero for both previous months. Yeah. So there is a criminal breach in our area in regards to the motor vehicle thefts at the location because it went up from eleven to a five. We're combating that situation at this point in time. I don't know if you guys seen it on the news or on Honolulu news now. There's a run on auto thefts in regards to Kias and Hyundai's because of the YouTube or there's like directions on how to steal these vehicles. Really super simple to steal them. So we're, we're, we're working with the community and trying to, you know, monitor those locations and try to see if we can catch these guys. Other than that, I just wanted to make mention to the board that we do have a change of command for District One. The new major at this point in time is going to be Paul Okamoto and the new captain is going to be Henry Roberts. They had, they just taking command this past December, leading into January. Major Okamoto wanted to express his salutations to everyone and just to reassure everyone that in twenty twenty-four, we know that we're going to be experiencing new and bigger and different challenges. But District One and District Five and Honolulu Police Department itself is ready for the challenge and we're gonna help try to mitigate all of these problems. So at this point, I'll yield back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board in regards to District One.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? Paula, go ahead. Paula, you're muted.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board for the lieutenant? Oh, Sylvia.
I wanted to say thank you because on New Year's Eve, I'm not gonna mention the person's name, but your officer was parked two houses away from me watching illegal fireworks and I was just so thankful for that because, but then he said, I'll stay here as long as I can, but if I get a call, I have to leave. But, um, you know, he was here a good, over an hour, you know, close to two hours. And he kind of knew which houses to watch for in my neighborhood for the illegal fireworks. Right after he left, fireworks came out. And, um, and I was really disappointed because some of the aerials fell into my yard. And that's when I became concerned and that's why I was supposed to go out for dinner and I said to the person, it's New Year's Eve. I'm not leaving my house. I need to be here to protect my home. So, um, but I wanted to say thank you for that officer who was on my street watching for all these illegal stuff going and he, he said he had some addresses of where these things were coming from. So I'm, we're making progress in that area, I think.
Yeah, Sylvia, thank you. Thank you. I'll let the comments staff know. I know that we did an operations on that night. We brought in extra staffing in regards to especially the Paua Papukulea area to, to, to try to help mitigate some of these arrows and stuff like that. But just, yeah, I mean, there's only so much we can do. Yeah. I mean, as soon as New Year's hits, we can't be everywhere and then everything starts going off. It's, it's really difficult. And it, and it's literally at, at that point, yeah, we're kind of almost asking neighbor to tell on a neighbor. And we know it's, that's a difficult situation to do, but I'm working with Senator Morewaki in regards to maybe some revision of the fireworks laws and stuff like that. Maybe we can come to a happy meeting because obviously the constituents are telling you that they kind of want these fireworks. So we'll, we'll see what they say in the new legislature and see what kind of laws they bring out.
Well, you know, I'm not as upset about firecrackers, you know, but where, you know, it stays in a certain area, but the aerials is what I'm very concerned with. It's, it's that stuff. And, um, and there's no reason for us to be having that in our private homes, you know, private property where you have these beautiful displays every Friday night Hilton Hawaiian Village. You get the Fourth of July and New Year's Eve, the other, um, you know, people that have these displays. And I think that if you need that, you don't need to be the person that's controlling these things. You need to just enjoy the beauty of the fireworks.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem Sylvia. Especially like some of these fireworks are Class D explosives. So they're, they're very dangerous, yeah, in, in, in unprofessional hands. So we want to make sure those types, especially those heavy aerials, those Class D, Class C type explosives are not, you know, readily available for the general public because only professionals should be handling those types of aerial fireworks. Yeah. But yeah, firecrackers, um, you know, that, that's totally different thing, but maybe the legislature needs to look at it a little bit more.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mason. Mason, I think you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Didn't we have something going on where they're checking these containers that are coming in and they caught a whole bunch of containers? It, it is still gonna be going on?
In regards to that, I think that, that confiscation, it was, it was, I think it was HSI Customs, yeah. It was, it was a different law enforcement entity. I think they got a tip in regards to that shipping container. And then, yeah, that, that's still being prosecuted and it's going, it's going to go federal, if I'm not mistaken, because of the, the, the sheer size of the entire container. Yeah. And then there is, and I don't want to go into too much information in regards to that because it still needs to get adjudicated, but there was a suspect listed on that, that case. Yeah.
Yeah, because that's, yeah, I mean, I know there was thousands of pounds that they caught.
Oh, yes.
But you know, I mean, they took part of it, but you know, hey, there's still a lot out there. And I think these guys are bringing them in way before New Year's. You know, you bring them in like three months or two months ahead, you know, you're not gonna catch them, you know? But, yeah, but you do, you guys do get the majority of them and you guys do the best you can. And I appreciate it as well as Sylvia. I appreciate all your guys' help and everything you guys do. Appreciate it.
No problem, Mason. I'll, I'll express the information back to the guys.
Okay, thank you.
Patrick, you need to unmute yourself.
Okay, sorry. I want to, thank you. I wanted to say, I was talking to the general manager of Oahu Country Club. I'm sure everyone saw it in the paper. And I just, he just expressed to me what, how professional and outstanding your division did or your district. And I just wanted to congratulate you. So thank you very much. Are there any questions from the community? Hearing none. Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate your time this evening.
Absolutely. You guys all have a great night.
Thank you. Next up, we have District Five Police Department. I see they're online.
Hello.
Evening, sir.
Hi. Happy New Year, everyone. Lieutenant Keaney Hong from District Five Kalihii. Going over the stats for December twenty twenty-three burglaries, we had two motor vehicle thefts. There were seven. There were thirteen and car break-ins there were thirty-four. It's kind of a high number, but again, it was a few instances where multiple cars were broken into near the lookouts on Poli. We also have change of command that recently occurred. Our Major Roland Turner, after twenty-seven years of service, retired this past year. So right now, we have Acting Major Kurt Ng and Acting Captain Anthony Smith in charge of District Five. But otherwise, I can answer any questions you have for District Five at this time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? For District Five. Paula.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good. Um, you wanna get a piece of paper and a pencil? Because we go. Um, we've been having a problem with the graffiti still on the Poli Highway at the overpass. We're by the Baptist Academy. No one seems to want to take care of that graffiti and everybody keeps calling me about it. Um, I think if we could get some paint and a paper, a brush, like if you could give us some paint and a brush, we, somebody can go down there and paint it. It's right at Wiley in the place where the workers were on the Poli Highway. They had all their, to all their equipment spread around over there and it's near Neola Po, Neola Pua. Yeah, I'm not good with Hawaiian, but anyway, Neola Po, Pua Street. A little bit was graffitied across the street. They cleaned the company for the highway DOT cleaned it up. But now there's still this one silver box sitting there and it's looking terrible. So I only got fifteen calls on it so far. Now I have called and they said they would send out a police officer, but I know you folks are busy for graffiti. But if you could do that, please.
Okay.
And look at it. If you, there's another way that Lieutenant Segucio gave us. I've tried the police. I've tried getting people on, calling it online and everything, and I can't get that. Not to go on and on. Um, they also for the schools, we're trying, we were trying through the state. I know that's not you folks, but the speeding in this area is out of control. It's like over sixty miles an hour coming in and you say, how do I know? Because I watched them go cross and that's it. If you could get the speeding down on, on the, I don't know if it's you folks or it's District One who used to help me in nineteen ninety-eight to get it down. Speeding is out of control and even in the side streets. And so with that, besides our chickens and everything else going on, we want to wish you a Happy New Year. And thank you for everything you folks do. And if you want to park at my house to do reports, you're more than welcome to. Because I live at five oh. And I want to help the police as much as I can because the places where I've tried to get stations because we don't have a station in Nuuuanu. I tried Wakonaka area for a station for you folks. St. Stevens Church Congregational Church and also the Boy Scouts. So if you're stuck where you can't go in and do your reports, you, you more than happy to have you come on Wood Street at five oh. At any time, at any time. Thank you.
Yeah, just real quick. Happy New Year. So for the graffiti, I know our CPT team with Sergeant Brian Oato, I believe, helped with that in the past. So send him a message about that. Also looked online. There is a graffiti hotline. It's eight oh eight.
I've tried that.
Yeah. And then did you go on the website? Because there's all different numbers for like buses, drainage canals, sidewalks.
I did that.
What happened?
I did that. And I even called it in and they said they'd send somebody out to talk to me, but no one came. So.
If you call.
Pardon?
Somebody will come out. If you call tonight and you need to report it, call tonight and definitely somebody will come out and talk to you. Yeah.
Really?
Yes, I'm working tonight. So I'll make sure somebody comes out and talks to you.
Oh, good. Because now you know where it is, but in the olden days, we used to get the paintbrush and the paint from you folks.
Oh, yeah.
But we don't get that now.
I think I can pass the message to the community policing team. They might be able to help with that. So that might be the best.
Yeah, the ones that I've called in in the past has helped. And coming off the freeway, the, um, um, the state highway coming up and around the curve, you'll see the graffitis and all that. We just don't want it in Nuuuanu, but right by the second overpass. Okay, it's so clear. And if you could do that for us, we'll have a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Questions or comments? Any questions from the community? And Pat, I see you with your raised, hand raised. Please go ahead.
Okay, in regards to the speeding on Poli Highway, there's something that needs to be done. Whether it's, I don't know, signs haven't helped, the reduced speed limit hasn't helped. I cross the highway in the mornings now because our bus one twenty-one was discontinued. I wear bright yellow jackets. I have even worn safety vest with the reflective stripes. And even then, I use strobing flashlights, okay? And nothing seems to work. They do not stop. I don't know what else can be done. Driver education perhaps? Letting people know how they should behave at pedestrian crosswalks. Poli Highway has three lanes coming and going. And so all three lanes have to stop before I cross. And you have these people who will come behind and see that, oh, that third lane is still open and they will cut out and cross the crosswalk. And I'm, you know, I've been fortunate that I've been smart enough to stop and wait to make sure that third lane is stopped. I don't know.
What, what intersection is that? Is that, um?
Poli Highway and Wood Street.
Would, okay. Yeah, we, there are laws on the books already, like yielding the position in the crosswalk that if we are able to park in the area, monitor that crosswalk and see violations, then of course we could pull over drivers and either educate them or give them a citation, right? But yeah, it's like you said, care of the drivers for their neighbor. And if they don't care about their neighbor.
No, they don't. And they don't know what the laws are. They really don't know how to behave at a crosswalk. They don't. They don't know that they're supposed to slow down and they don't know that they're supposed to check to see if there's a pedestrian trying to cross. I had people zoom past me in the crosswalk, turn their head, look at me and wave.
Hmm. Probably noticed. I'm glad the reflective devices and lights just to protect yourself, at least your
Yes.
looking at yourself as much as you can. But yeah, I can pass on the word to the day watch and our, our, I'm on the night watch. And then we could try to set up some enforcement in that area, especially if it's a dangerous for pedestrians.
I cross at six AM, so it's still dark. They should see my strobing flashlights, but
Yes.
doesn't seem to encourage them to stop.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from anybody? Paula.
Can you give some tickets?
No, unfortunately, you would have to be a
Even if you see it?
Yeah.
We can make party and then we can give tickets. Thank you.
Okay. Are, are there any other comments or questions from anybody? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Lieutenant. We appreciate your time for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, moving on, we have the Neighborhood Security Watch and that's Paula. Paula, do you want to make a report? It looks like we lost Paula.
Yes, yes, it's going.
Paula, do you have a report?
Yes, sorry. It, it's not happy with me tonight. Um, Neighborhood Security Watch, we've had a few incidences and I know when the police are still there, we've had some increase and Lieutenant Segucio even mentioned the three people that just recently broke into Oahu Country Club, which was on TV tonight, was on Channel Four. Just for your information, Mr. Smith. Um, the other part of it is the break-ins and things that are breaking in are seeming to be in the more northern part end up in Poli, which they mentioned, and I don't want to repeat myself. But if people would be O L O, be on the lookout. If you see something, report it. We don't need it in our area. Please. Report it. The police will take care of it. I guarantee you that. This is me. Out. Bye.
Thank you. Are, are there any questions for the Neighborhood Security Watch from anybody? Paula, thank you for the good work. I know it's a lot, it's a lot of work. So thank you very much on behalf of the community. So thank you. So next up, we have Border Water Supply and who is that again? I'm sorry. Border Water Supply?
Okay.
Oh, yes, please.
Yeah, I'm a kid here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jimmy. I'm setting for water tonight for General Court the last month. I'm gonna start with our main breaks for December. We had four main breaks. The first was December sixth. That was an eight inch diameter cast iron pipe on Connele E Avenue. The second was December seventh. That's a twenty inch cast iron pipe on Koakimi Street. The third was December sixteenth. That was a six inch cast iron pipe on Paua Road. And the final one was December twenty-fourth. That was an eight inch PVC pipe on Alika Avenue. So now I'll move on to my general water announcements concerning New Year's resolution. A new year is an opportunity to change small habits that can make a big impact. A significant, significant one is water conservation. If we are conscientious about our water use, we can ensure an adequate supply for generations to come. Here are five easy ways to save water. First is check for leaks. The second is replace your old toilet with a water sense label model. That's one point two eight gallons per flush or less and qualify for a forty-five dollar rebate from Border Water Supply. The third is consider planting drought resistant plants. Our fourth tip is
Oh, actually, we've lost the audio. Is anybody else hearing this? Okay, um, yeah, we've lost audio. Do you?
Also wanted to talk about some items from last month, some concerns from last month.
Oh, Jimmy, Jimmy, we, we lost audio for a minute or two when you got on the fourth item.
Okay.
I'm sorry. We did, yeah. So if you could just repeat that. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So our fourth tip to conserve water is purchase a rain barrel and qualify for a forty dollar rebate from Border Water Supply. And our last tip was put a nozzle on your garden hose. And more of these tips can be found at www dot borderwatersupply dot com slash intersection. Now I'll follow up on some concerns from last month. Concerning the water system improvements project on Lower Nuuuanu, there aren't any updates from that, but just wanted to talk about two concerns from last month. One concern was, one question was, did Border Water approve the contractor's request to push out the notice to proceed date to February second, twenty twenty-four? And Border Water did approve that. This delay was due to pipe materials. And another concern was, when did the contractor order these materials? And Border Water ordered these materials at the end of July slash early August. And this was completed after Border Water Supply approved the materials. There was one more concern. It's a question on the ditch for the bridge on Puiva Road. There's trees growing and blocking the ditch. And there's a question on who is responsible for cleaning the ditch? Is it under Border Waters jurisdiction? And just found out that this falls under the purview of the Department of Facility Maintenance. This is DFM. And we suggest that you let the mayor's rep know or contact DFM directly at eight oh eight, seven, six, eight, three, three, four, three. And that concludes my monthly report. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
I, I would just add, accidentally I put it on, it wasn't supposed to be for public on the actual agenda. I do want to put a note that I had a email from Kathleen Elliott from Border Water that said that they would, the Border Water would take specific questions regarding the rate increase. Just so everybody knows. I assume not this evening, but at least we'll answer them as they come in. So with that said, I see a couple of people asking questions. I assume Audrey wants to ask a question. So please go ahead.
As you smile, Mr. Chair, poor Jimmy. Jimmy, first of all, I have the rest of the board member remembered, but I told Jimmy to let us know before the board meeting, any reply back. We forgot. So, okay. Jimmy's smiling. Okay. So then he said the project was supposed to, this is the Lower Nuuuanu project was supposed to start February second, point twenty-four, was supposed to start. Is that what you said? Or will it start a little?
Sorry. It was that the notice to proceed date was February second of this year.
The notice to proceed. Okay. So then, interesting, you said that Border Water ordered the materials at, um, end of July?
Oh, sorry. That was the contractor.
Right. So the contract, for the record, is the contractor that orders the materials.
Yes.
So they ordered it end of July. Why would it take this long? And if it's long, did they say how long or what or? Okay, that, that's all right. I don't think you know the answer. So they're gonna start up on February second, right? So that's like two, three weeks from now, right?
Yeah, that's the notice to proceed date.
So they're gonna start, right? They got their materials, right? You can order the materials in July. They, not you with them, but if they don't get the materials. So hopefully the materials that, you guys get the M G P notice to proceed on February second. So hopefully they'll start soon, soon after February second.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Audrey, real quick, I, I, I don't know if Kathleen had something she wanted to add. It looked like she started. If, if you want to, Kathleen, please go ahead.
Chair, I appreciate that. I just wanted to let the board know, we've had a really rough time, our contractors, just with supply chain issues. And that's why it's been taking so long. We order the materials, but it's just been taking a gosh awful time to get them. But we'll stay on top of this for your board and report regularly back on its progress. So thank you.
Thank you. Audrey, is, does that satisfy your, your question?
Of course not. But that's all right. It's okay. At least you get information. I'm good to go. Not happy? Yes, not happy, but we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Sorry. I didn't mean to make light of it. Anyway, Mason, Mason, you're up next. Please, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to, um, thank, um, because went back to that water main break on Connele E. That was a real bad one because the water was coming all the way through the park, Booth Park, all the way down to Namili Milli Street and it flooded Namili Milli Street, part of Namili Milli Street. And I had to have the police department to come and remove those And I had to have the police department to come and remove those sewer blockage, so that the water can drain. Otherwise, our water was going into people's homes on, on Namili Milli Street. And that was a bad, but the police department, one guy had his boots in his truck, in his car, and he came down and he unplugged it, so the water was able to drain. And then the next day, I thanked the Border Water Supply, because they came and cleaned the Namili Milli Street with all the mud that came off Booth Park. And they did a very good job, and I appreciate it. And I was out there with them throughout the entire, they took eight hours to ten hours just to clean that mess. The next day, but I thanked the Border Water Supply for helping, helping us residents for doing that. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mason. I don't know if you want to reply, Jimmy, but if not, then we can move on to Paula.
I just wanted to make sure that you know that Wood Street was not mentioned in the report. Is there a reason for that? Number one. Number two, we've had so many breaks that Audrey keeps, she's in charge of water around here. Um, when we're drowning, uh, she even goes out when it's bubbling in the street. So we want to know exactly if it's February second and they can lay their laws down and say that is gonna be it because it's getting to be bad, because we're using our hoses to clean up the mud that comes into our properties. And then they charge us extra money on our bill. So I wonder what we can do about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Are there any?
How do we get our money back? How do we get our money back? Extra water. Extra water.
Take note of that, Jimmy. But, but, um, are there any questions from anybody, the community included, uh, for the representative from Border Water Supply? Hearing none. Uh, Jimmy, thank you very much for your time, and, and we appreciate it. We know there's a lot to do, but it's, it's, you know, very important for our community, so we appreciate your time coming out. Thank you. Um, next up, we have filling of vacancies. We have two vacancies in the Punch Bowl area. If anybody is in attendance that would be interested in serving in, in those capacities, we can actually find out if you satisfy the residency requirements of living in that area. Uh, is there been anybody interested? Hearing none, um, we can move on to residents and community concerns. Um, I have a couple of notes in here, they were more just announcements, uh, they weren't supposed to be put on there, I was supposed to just read them out. But as you can read, there, there are a couple of, uh, issues, and I have emails for those. If anybody is interested, please email me, and I'll be happy to provide you the information. With that said, are there any community concerns? None? All right.
No, um, Patrick, I do.
All right, Sylvia, please.
Um, wait. Uh, we got a variant, I mean, a zoning po, border of appeals, um, notice. And I thank you, Patrick, for following up and, and, um, attending that meeting. And to let us know that it was only for the scheduling of Awa. A application that's coming in on Booth Road. So we should be monitoring that, um, in our sub-district too, since it's in our sub-district. But I suspect, without seeing anything and actually was able to have somebody drive me by. You know that picture that Adrian, um, got from the Google map? That house is in beautiful condition in that picture, but when I drove by, I think that's gonna be a tear down and a rebuild on that property, and that's why that application is coming in.
Well, um, that, just so everybody knows, uh, there is a, gonna be a motions hearing. And I can't, I wrote it down, but I can't remember off the top of my head, but they're not actually going to, uh, they being the the Board of Appeals or DPP is not actually gonna uh, hear that final case until January of two thousand twenty-five. So I was gonna ask maybe, um, someone in council members staff if they can find out what that's about. Uh, it, we have a lot of time, so that's certainly gonna be looked at, and, and we'll keep our eyes out for that, so, just to let you know. But yeah, I went to the hearing, and it was pretty much just, just for scheduling purposes.
Uh, so that's something that we should be following up on in the next two years, next year.
Year, yeah, so I'll get the permit, and we can review it at, at that time. So we are, I, I will let the rest of the board know, so we are keeping our eyes and ears open for, uh, any potential issues with permitting, so thank you. Any other, uh, Pat, I see you.
I was just, um, concerned about when the Poli Highway was closed, and we did not have any bus service. And, um, and Uber costed like fifty bucks for me to get to work. And I wonder what, um, the city or if the, uh, the board can do anything about an emergency, uh, situation where the one twenty-one runs again, and I know that it did. Um, but it started at eight o'clock in the morning, and that doesn't help me, because I usually catch the bus at six. There are no windward buses coming down through Poli Highway to get people into town.
You know, I, it strikes me, that's, that's an excellent question, and when we have the, uh, mayor's representative, I think that would be a perfectly appropriate question to follow up with, with, um, I see Director Hashiro's online, so when, when she comes on, I would certainly remind her of that. I think that you're right, that, that should be, the city should have plans for that type of scenario, especially since DOT knows that Poli Highway is a little iffy, uh, and, and it can happen, so thank you. Thank you for that concern. Are there any other community concerns? Anyone want to be heard? Hearing none, we'll move on to report of our elected officials, and just so happens, our first, uh, elected, uh, representative is Director Kim Ashiro, uh, speaking for the mayor.
Hello, I had my hand up for a community.
Oh, 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 sorry, I, I must have missed someone. Oh, Roberta. Yes, please go ahead. I apologize, Director, we'll get with you in just a moment. Roberta, please go ahead.
Um, I have concern regarding the flooding and the flooding issues in the state and the sea level rise, as well as the building of the six-foot wall around the Alawai Canal. And I know these are not our district, well, that is not our district, but what I'm concerned about is also the aquifers and how we're getting low on water, and if we can keep that replenished, the fuels at the top or the polluted waters at the top will not come into the drinking system that gets pumped out. So my question to our, and I was listening to the Ways and Means meeting this past week, and Senator Rhodes was there, and he has, um, he represents that area that has, that is concerned about the, uh, flooding. And what I would like to know for DPP and for the state, why are we not looking at the main cause of the flooding, which is runoff onto our streets and um, in our parking lots and whatever into the stormwater system? And why, and I don't know why we're not looking at requiring all new developments to have a water catchment system that will return the water, rainwater, into the ground rather than into the stormwater system? Because I see all these high rises coming up, and they're just, uh, covering the earth with concrete and asphalt. So I know it's gonna take away some of their space for building, but these are necessary changes that we need to make in our mental laws to make sure that the water goes back into the earth rather than into the stormwater system and into the ocean, into the Alawai and all of that stuff. So I'm not sure if this was the right time to present this, but I'm asking this question of not just Senator Rhodes' office and Senator Rhodes, but also with DPP, with the city and the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I guess we can ask the mayor's representative to comment on that, and, uh, when Senator's time comes up, we can also get him his input. So any other, uh, concerns? Okay, hearing none, uh, we'll move on to our elected officials reports, and as, as I said earlier, we'll have, uh, Director Kim Ashiro, um, speak for the mayor. Director?
Hey, good evening, everyone.
Uh, Director, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
So I did make a notation of the two questions that came up, um, most recently, and those will need to be assigned to the appropriate departments. Um, so with the first question, um, regarding an emergency situation, would you be able to elaborate what occurs?
We're slowly getting our tax mails in, so we can solidate them on my desk something. We're getting the mail, the tax stuff in slowly.
Um, okay, I Liam, I, I, I'm not sure you meant to say that to the, were you talking to the group?
Yes.
Board? No, I was, I know, I know you were, I'm sorry, Director, I, I, someone else chimed in, and, and I don't think it was applicable. I'm sorry, you were asking for a follow-up regarding?
Right, so you know the situation during an emergency situation with, um, buses early in the morning? Uh, running from the windward side to town. Can you explain, can someone explain that a little further?
Well, the Poli Highway was closed because of a, um, landslide. So therefore, the windward buses couldn't come through and service Poli Highway in the New Wano Valley. So we were without transportation, and I know that they did bring on the one twenty-one at like about eight o'clock in the morning, but I catch my bus at six because I need to be at work by seven. So, you know.
Sorry, the one twenty-one. Oh, that's the one that you've been mentioning in previous meetings?
Yes, that's the one that goes up Old Poli Road, turns around and goes back down, so it never has to go through the Poli.
Okay, understood. I can ask about that.
Yeah, so I guess i- in general, though, uh, it's more to develop sort of contingency plans. Especially, you know, when major thoroughfares are blocked, and, you know, I would think, uh, you have things places like Leaky, Leaky, Poli Highway, you know, it'd be kind of important to, you know, if they have plans, if they could implement those when, when that has come up. So anyway, that's it.
And also, the main thing is how to let the public know. Because I've asked before if the app, if you could put an announcement on the bus app, but they said no, they couldn't. Because that's, um, held by the, uh, people who provide the app. So we need some way to notify, um, passengers that, you know, the service is operational. And whether it's on the website, the city website, or if we're told, if this happens, check this website to see if there is a contingency plan that's running. That would be extremely helpful.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I noted that down. Okay, thank you. And the second one was, um, concern about flooding and, and aquifer levels, wanting to make sure that our drinking water is not contaminated. Um, what's being observed is that in construction areas or where projects and buildings are coming up, um, runoff is, um, going into storm drains, uh, which lead to the ocean and not being contained and somehow being redeposited back into, um, the ground, um, for filtering. Was that accurate?
Um, not exactly. What I'm saying is that in the, in the planning of developments, not during the construction, but of course during construction, because NPDES would already cover that, and they're required by federal law to contain that water during construction. But what I'm talking about is in the whole master plan of any development, whether it's a high-rise, whether it's a golf course, a city park, whatever, that, or even like the J T M C. If you notice, there's a swale on the side that collects runoff water, and it goes, it absorbs into the ground. Well, all new developments need to have this requirement that makes sure that the runoff goes into the ground into a water catchment area permanently for eternity, so that it doesn't go running off into the street or into the stormwater system. We want it to absorb into the ground to refill our aquifers. When it goes into the stormwater system, it goes into culverts, and it rushes out to the ocean, and that's why we're having all this problem with the Alawai. The Alawai, it could contain that water before. The reason why it can't contain it now is because the water's not being absorbed into the ground, because there's so much development in Manoa, Pa'ua, um, St. Louis Heights, that whole area that, that Aku Pua that leave, that empties into Alawai. So what our problem is, is that it, it's not that we have, it's not, the water is now being funneled right onto roadways and into culverts, so it doesn't flood houses or flood, uh, people don't, don't want the water, because there's nowhere no designated area for the rainwater to absorb back into the ground, because we've paved everything over. So what I'm talking about is changing the, um, L U O probably to in, to require developments to have an area where stormwater, not somewhere where rainwater will go back into the ground, will absorb back into the ground. And I'm not talking about during construction, I'm talking about forever. Does that make sense? Right now, there's no more green areas where the water runs back into the ground, it all runs into stormwater systems. So I'd like to see us start to explore returning the water, making the requirement for all new developments to have water catchment systems that will send the water back into the ground to be absorbed, rather than letting it go into water, into the stormwater system. And that is road, highway, everything.
Okay, so yeah, we can assign that question, um, to DPP.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did you have a further report, or should I open this up to questions?
I, I, I did. I just wanted to capture that while it was fresh in my mind and, and update my notes. So I did, um, want to share, I'll put in the chat, um, the two thousand twenty-four newsletter from the mayor. Um, he does have a new year message. Um, he is looking back at two thousand twenty-three in review, and it does include, the newsletter includes statistics on various city services and what has been provided over the last year. There's also.
Uh, Sylvia, Sylvia, you need to mute yourself, please. It's all right, Director, please go ahead.
That's okay. And, um, there is also a new off-leash dog park, which opened in the Salt Lake area. And then the last announcement is that the city received a two thousand twenty-three Project of the Year Award. Um, and this was to upgrade the city's HR, financial, and budgeting system. So as I mentioned, I'll include the link to the newsletter in the chat. Also, that, uh, an announcement is being made that the Neighborhood Commission Office is hiring Neighborhood Board Assistants. And this is to engage in public awareness for community support. Neighborhood assistants help coordinate with Neighborhood Board Chairs, produce written reports to members of the public. If anyone's interested, or if you know anyone is, is interested, um, I will also put the contact info in the chat for the Neighborhood Commission Office. And I did have two follow-up items from the last meeting. So the first was that board member Chris Yeh noted that she had received complaints from residents regarding the, um, missing street sign at the intersection of Laura Dossett. at the intersection of Laura Dawson Avenue and Poly Highway near the International Church of Oahu. And she noted, there's a lot of visitors who get lost up in Nuano because of the missing sign. So the sign was replaced on November twenty-seventh of last year. Hopefully, uh, everyone has seen that sign and can confirm that. Um, but please let me know if there's any other issues regarding um that sign. Second thing is that um resident Pat Tyra commented on the data provided by DTS regarding Poly Highway pedestrian safety. And she noted that the reason why there are not that many people getting on, on bus, and on at bus stop three seventy-two across from Wood Street is because there are no sidewalks that lead from the residential area to that bus stop. And the only way to get to that bus stop is by crossing Poli, which can be very dangerous. So DTS responded that the jurisdiction for roadway improvements on Poly Highway is under state DOT. So this includes pedestrian sidewalks, street lighting, et cetera. And so this comment is being referred to state DOT. I just wanted to add also because I, I have noted definitely that a lot of comments from Pat as well as other residents regarding safe crossing on Poly Highway has come up during many meetings. And I'm working with the state DOT Director and sniffing regarding options on Poly Highway. And uh at the last meeting that I attended, there was a uh subsequent suggestion from Councilmember Dos Santos Tam regarding installing a button to extend crossing times on Poly Highway for elderly, disabled, or those needing additional time to cross the highway. So I did ask um Ed Sniffin if that was an option for Poli. And again, state DOT actually has jurisdiction over the traffic lights on Poli. The city will implement um whatever um the state actually determines. So he is working on a response and um I will provide that at our next meeting. If not sooner, if I get the information sooner, then I will pass that on to the chair to be shared. Um, but I did also ask him if there are other things that state DOT is looking into regarding pedestrian safety on Poli and extending crossing times. And that concludes my report. Um, please let me know if there's any questions.
Thank you. Uh, I see Sylvia has her, or had her hand raised for quite a time, so please go ahead Sylvia. Sylvia, um, you're muted.
Sorry, I muted it because I had the telephone call. But anyway, um, two things. Well, yeah, one thing was um the comment that Roberta Chan has asked Kim to follow up on. Isn't the city also trying to implement a um? What was it called? A runoff, the water runoff? Penalty that, and charge the homeowners that have a lot of concrete where the water cannot seep back into the property. I think there's uh something that is being worked on in the city. I don't remember which department. Was that um?
I'm sorry, if I can, if I could break in, I believe, I'm not sure the department itself, and I think they were trying to split off, but that was a um. It wasn't the border. But what it was gonna do was implement like a higher property tax quotient, I believe, on the percentage, based on the percentage of property that did, did not allow uh water drainage or water, you know, whatever you talk about when water can go into the ground as opposed to that which is asphalted or concreted or whatever. So there would be a penalty to uh property owners for that type of thing.
Correct.
I'm not sure what's in place.
Well, I'm sure you're, that in the response, they're probably uh, you know, remind us exactly what that is. And I'm not sure that that really actually was implemented, or if it's going to be implemented in the future, or what the status of that is, but.
Okay.
Sure, that, that's probably what they respond when you investigate it. Thank you. Second question?
We did have a uh presentation, and that's what I remembered. That my other question is regarding the, in the minutes about the bus. Um, it says something about you noted, the Chair Smith noted a proposal to maybe give vouchers for taxis is in the city council. And somebody said Leonardo will follow up regarding the voucher proposal from DTS. Young noted, you cannot use the Handy Van service if you already have a disabled placard. Um, and but there, but Robert did say that there was a Medicare provided transportation service, but that is a private company and you have to pay for it. Uh, there's um, a, a fee, an annual fee for that. But um, the one I'm concerned with was the one that Pat noted that whatever happened to the DTS Handy Van suggestion at the previous meeting. And I don't know what, if that was answered. But that's in our last minutes about um that Pat asked about the DTS Handy Van suggestion. I don't know what the suggestion was.
Uh, I'll also follow up with DTS. I know that Roger Morton, the director for that department, has been working um to try to supplement uh the shortage of handy vans, um you know, or handy vans not being able to meet the demand. And looking into possible um supplementation by taxis and, you know, some kind of voucher program. My understanding is.
Okay.
So it's still being worked on before. Okay, so I can do that.
Sorry, but, but they make it very difficult for you when you're handicapped. You know, it's, it's either or, and you're too far away from the bus stop to actually take a bus. And, you know, the, and, but you can't use the Handy Van because you have a placard. So it, it, it is very difficult because you can't take a, you can take, you can't, a lot of times the people in Nuano can't take a um the bus because it's too far. And now with all the complaints that Pat has about the bus system and the rerouting, it makes it even worse. So I don't know what the situation could be that we gotta think of something that's out of the box to accommodate all these aging disabled people.
So as far as, you know, having, if you have a disabled placard, the expectation is that you're able to drive or you're able to have someone drive you.
Yes.
And, right, and then the Handy Van is designed for those that don't have that option. And, you know, need some, need a handy van or some, someone to come and pick them up, right? Because they don't have that ability to either drive themselves or have somebody drive them um somewhere. So I, I will find out if there are any other programs they're, they're working on um to help increase services um for elderly or disabled. And I'll report back on that. Um, like I mentioned, I, I do know that Roger Morton has been working on this um taxi voucher program. Because he does recognize that there's a higher handy van demand and uh resources.
Yeah, the, see, the problem is, I have a handy, I have a placard, a disabled placard. But I don't have a driver's license anymore. And so I have to wait for somebody to come and drive me to use the packet. You know, that's, that's the problem. And so I don't think they thought it out clearly because some people like me have a placard. And because when I need to travel, somebody's gonna drive me, but, you know, we can park in the disabled stalls, but um, but like when I'm at home now, I don't have a driver's license, so what do I do? I, I, it's too far for me to get to the bus stop. So, I don't know.
Okay.
So Sylvia, let, let me follow up with, with DTS and see, you know, where the um taxi voucher program is at. On what they're looking at as far as the timeline, and I can report back on that. And then also if they're working on any other kind of program that would help to increase service. I, I guess, you know, you bring up a good point too about the disabled placards, so, and you're not having a driver's license. So state decap actually, it has jurisdiction, right, over the disabled placards. The city just issues really the placards um for state decap. So we can also follow up with them, with the decap office uh to see if there's a way, and, and I don't know what the answer is to this, if there's a way to somehow designate that if you have a placard, but you no longer have a driver's license, you can't, you know, drive yourself. If that could somehow be treated differently, right, in terms of the Handy Van situation. So I'll note that down also.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, are there any further questions, Paula?
I have two questions, or three maybe. Um, I'm in the same situation as, as Sylvia, but my situation is that I can drive, I have a driver's license. But for me to go across the Poly Highway is ridiculous. There's no way I can get across in fourteen seconds, although in the last meeting, they did say that they've looked at it and only one person got stuck in the middle. That was unacceptable to me. Number two is, I wanna know what they're doing for the disabled because the, I sent in sixteen pictures of all the things that are wrong with the Poly Highway for disabled. City and county, I think, should be in, involved also to hook up together with transparency to find out what all those places are, like a telephone pole in the middle of a sidewalk. Someone in a wheelchair has to go in the road to get up the Poly Highway. Even if they can ride the bus. I have a bus pass, so I could go. But I can't use it to walk across the Poly, so that's the third thing. And so when I turn in all my pictures, I turned them into the senior sit, uh Department of Seniors, Department of Health kind of thing. And I haven't heard back from anyone. I don't know if it went to visioning or where the pictures went to for the Dawson Circle, which here you have many, many, many problems as far as the seniors in this area. So I think that's four things. Um, I think somebody better look into ADA because I'm at the point, actually, as a physical therapist, to file an ADA against everyone. This is not right for us. And if all the other lawsuits.
Can I ask you a question? You know what I mentioned earlier about working with DOT to extend the duration of the, of the crosswalk light or the crossing light on Poli? Do you think that that is something that would be, because I understand you have a, a lot of different issues, right? And concerns, but if we. Because, because that seems to be something that continues to recur and that.
We lost some money for the light. Three years we tried with um Carl Rhodes. We lost that. We also lost the idea that we, as seniors, even though we're disabled, we'd possibly ride the bus so I could go down and see the skyliner that's going across. I, I actually went down and got that. I wanna know if I can have my taxes lowered because then now I don't have bus. And if I wanna ride the Handy Van, I gotta pay five dollars, ten dollars, or whatever it is. They've cornered me in. And even when I go to try to drive, I still gotta pay in the meter. So I don't mind paying in the meter, but I think the whole ADA situation needs to be looked at. And if you go from back to nineteen ninety, they, they pass ADA rules. The wheelchair should be thirty-two inches. Now, the, the wheelchairs are thirty-six inches. So even the sidewalks on the Poly Highway are, are not wide enough, not wide enough. So someone in that si- situation or department or whoever the experts, they need to look to, at the whole federal law and the state. And the state needs to catch up to the federal law. But the federal law is old too, nineteen ninety. So, what do we do?
When did you submit it to DOH? When?
Yes, I talked to Phil Ano, and I gave him all the pictures, and I don't know where all those pictures went.
Do you know where that, when that was about?
Oh, this was the list last year, before he retired. Yes. I don't know where all the pictures went.
Phil Ano worked for DOH and he retired last year, is that what?
Yeah, this last year, but all this time, I don't know where they did with the pictures. As a physical therapist, I was, I was thinking of ramps and curbs. And I was trying to get the Board of Water Supply to look at the sidewalks and everything when people were walking over here. It just, in their monitoring and contracting, everybody worked together as a system. So, you know, at the sidewalk, you put in a ramp. You don't leave a curb there with a space in between so the wheelchair gets stuck, or the walker gets stuck, or the cane gets stuck. You gotta work together on ADA. That's my, my point of view.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't mean to go on and on, but happy new year anyway.
Are there any other questions or concerns for the mayor's representative?
I want to one more thing. Are you in charge of the chickens?
It is under my department.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't wanna say I'm in charge of chickens, but we do have a program um right now that we started actually um for um non-city, so private, private residences and private property.
So you charge people when the chickens are in your yard? Number two is, I wanna know why you, why you don't catch the chickens and make an area for the chickens only. Because now you've got four new pests. You got the rhinoceros and the red ants and the blah, 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 and everything that's, I, I heard that. Why not put the chickens in the area and let them kill? The, even the scorpions and the centipedes. Just catch them and use them as, not bait, but catch them and use them and get them away from the homes, but a place where you can grow them and you can give out eggs. They make pretty good eggs and you can uh fertilize your land. It's just simple to me.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm sorry, we're really running over time. If you have any other questions or, or concerns.
No, I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you, but we really need to, to move. Um, Director, did, did you wanna just have any other thoughts or? Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, I, I think we've given you quite a list, but thank you very much for um hearing us. Thank you. Next up, we have uh the representative from uh Tyler Dos Santos Tam, our council member. Oh, council member.
Hey Chair, Lisa apologizes she can't be here. Uh, the power's out in Kanaiohe, uh where she lives, and so she can't get on. Um, I'm glad I follow Director Hashiro because I think we've gone through most of the issues here. Um, we did send out a copy of my January newsletter. Um, let me check my notes from Lisa to make sure that um we didn't have anything. We do have, we are working on a number of uh pieces of legislation, as you know, the council is year-round, um as opposed to legislature, which is starting tomorrow. Um, but we're gonna be working on uh some game room uh legislation this spring. We have some uh affordable housing and DPP legislation that's coming up. And we're gonna be closing loop on the Dillingham uh rail construction uh work that you might have seen in the news uh to help support those small businesses that are affected in the area. Um. I do wanna report that a number of short-term rentals. I do wanna report that a number of short-term rentals in our district have been uh shut down, those that are operating legally. There's one on Polly Highway that I believe um they should be getting a another notice of violation fairly soon. Um it's been a pretty big frustration of mine that uh some of these short-term rental violators, you know, just rack up tons of fines and nobody seems to be going after them, but um we're gonna keep pushing. Uh this is, I think, in the twenty-nine-hundred block of Polly Highway.
Twenty-nine sixty.
Thank you. Uh I'm sorry, did that conclude your report?
Any any questions?
Yeah, any questions from the board? Uh Paula?
I saw at one point you sent out a a paper that said they were working on the dam. And I was wondering how much more information went out about the dam so that we were all be all re prepared. I did let everybody know um that that was being worked on, but I'm wondering if that's done now. Number one. Number two, um for the bridge at Puiva. I understand you told Ed Case not to get involved with that. And I'm wondering what is going on with that as far as the bridge and the trees and the blockages of the stream. Because now the bottom of the stream does have the mud that went down. And it might cause another problem for flooding at the end closest to the Baptist Academy.
Sure. So uh to the point about the dam, um we did send out a newsletter um late last year uh talking about dam safety. This is kind of in the wake of Lahaina and just people being on heightened alert about all kinds of emergencies. Um so the flyer is mostly about uh emergency preparedness and awareness in case something happens at the dam. Um thanks to Kathleen Pahehui, who I think is on the call. Um I'm I'm actually visiting the dam tomorrow uh to uh to see all of the um dams for the four reservoirs myself. Um BWS is, I think, continuing to work, but I'll defer to BWS to answer that in their section. As for the Puiva Street Bridge, um I wouldn't characterize it as telling Ed Case not to be involved as much as it is a city issue. And so to Ed Case, you know, I I appreciate um him bringing it to continue uh bringing it to our attention, not that it wasn't to our attention already. Um but at the end of the day, it is the city's um responsibility to do so. I think Lisa explained in a previous meeting, and if not, um I apologize, but um DFM does have one crane that services all of the streams around the island. They will get to Puiva Stream at some point. Right now, they're on Kalihie Stream, um and they kind of move around the island on a certain schedule. Um I would like to add another um out of line item to DFM's budget in the upcoming budget cycle so they can get a second crane, but for the time being, they just have one. And so um they're they're making do as best as they can.
My my question is, what do the people do now where the mud has gone down? Is that Claybon? And behind the church, Congregational Church. Cause I was worried that whole stream is the same stream. It goes down the side of the mountain. So if you don't know what's going on at the top, that goes down to the bottom and the people don't know, they're also talking about redistributing the stream with the Congregational Church, which came out last month or November, yeah, November. So if they're working at the top and they don't know what's going on at the bottom, we I've been getting calls as far as mud starting to pile up on Claybon. So that has been a big factor, and if the dam is gonna open up again because they've got something wrong. I hope everybody knows because we've lost fish, we've lost gardens, we've lost everything that was beautiful in this area just because the dam, the dam mess keeps happening. So if you know anything further, can you sure let us know or let the Hawaiian Stream Committee?
Yeah, we certainly.
Hawaiian Street Committee, yes. Hawaiian Street.
Okay, yeah. Paula, let let him answer, please. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll certainly let you know. Um again, as as the board probably knows, because this constantly comes up regarding the stream. Um there are only certain portions of stream that are under city jurisdiction. And so um I I don't know exactly where the mud is with respect to Claybon Place. I know that most of the stream along Claybon Place is under city jurisdiction towards the end. Um I think it fifty fifty-two Akamu. Um it reverts back to uh private jurisdiction. And so um it kind of depends on where all of these issues in particular are.
Correct.
Yeah, see Sylvia has her.
I own, I own half a stream, so I wanna know what goes on.
Okay, um thank, thank you. Uh next up, Sylvia, please.
Okay, Tyler, I left the message for Brandon to call me back last week. I never received a return call regarding the um application, the possible application that's coming in on Booth Road for the property of Booth Road with the zoning board.
Sylvia, Sylvia, we we kinda covered that and and that's gonna be, I know, but I'm sorry.
I know, but what I wanted to say is not, I'm not repeating what what was said. I'm saying that I contacted Tyler's office to have them follow up and I have not had a response.
So Brandon, um Brandon actually went to the governor's office on January fourth, so if you got in touch with him on his personal cell. Um he's with the governor's office now.
He's not with your department, your office anymore?
Yeah, so um uh Brandon Mitsuda from my staff um actually went over to the governor's office and he's now in the governor's homelessness office. Um which actually kind of works out for um a lot of our community since a lot of his work was involving um homelessness issues all throughout District Six, so um it'll be good to have a friend in the governor's office, uh but he's up there.
Oh, okay.
In the meantime, um if you contact just my main office line, seven six eight five zero zero six, um someone will get back to you that way.
Oh, okay, great. That's all I wanted to know. And even the streams and the dam and everything is part of the city's jurisdiction. I would think that you would wanna work with Ed Case because you might need the help of the Corps of Engineers, which is under the federal government. So that might be a suggestion that you might wanna take into consideration.
No, definitely. I think it was the depiction of telling Ed Case to sort of, you know, go away, which I I don't think that was actually the case. Um but again, it's the specific issues that the people have with New Wanda Stream are portions that are within the city's control and the city needs to maintain it.
Thank you. Uh do we have any um other questions from the board, Paula? After everybody else, please. Do you have any questions from anyone else on the board for the council member? Hearing none, Paula, go ahead, please.
I just wanna make sure that he knew that it was my letter that started all this, that to Ed Case because of the, yeah, and even the legislators, uh everyone. I wanted them all to know so you could folks could work together for transparency as to what could be done because the houses got flooded and that area Claybon is in the phone book for flood area. And make sure everybody knows that if you, whatever you do at the top, as far as I know in physics, rolls downhill, so then you're gonna get the mud down there. And then you gotta deal with the church because the church wants it all changed. So it might end up in a lawsuit, I don't know. Just to make sure you know, there is a letter that went to everyone.
Thank you. Uh are there any questions from the community for the council member? Hearing none, uh thank you very much, Tyler. We appreciate you coming out this evening and uh your help. Thank you. Uh next up on the agenda, we have the governor's representative. I see William already up on the screen, so please, please go ahead.
Good evening, guys. Uh William New, Governor's Representative to New Wanda Neighbor Board, number twelve. Um just wanted to highlight that this is the one year into Governor Green's term um in office. And with uh next week, Monday, is his first stated estate address, I'm sorry, his second stated estate address. Um and which will be highlighting his upcoming initiatives and maybe a recap of the past work done. That'll be on Monday at ten AM and it'll be held at the House Chambers, but if you wanted to watch it, it should be streamed live on various social media channels and probably television. Uh may most of the major newscasts will be covering it. That's Monday at ten AM, uh January twenty-second. One, the the stated state will likely uh focus on the core priorities for the state affordability, house uh homelessness, housing, and obviously to take waste and buy wildfire and the path forward. As some of our previous speakers have alluded to, there is a legislative session which starts tomorrow and that there'll be a range of issues and policy items that's up for discussion uh for the next coming session and going forward for the state. I also want to highlight, I asked the main, that's the main point of the governor's um report from the newsletter and some of the upcoming items. I want to touch base on one in the inquiries from Audrey regarding the rock wall um that was damaged previously. Uh this was, I did follow up again with the owner and it is their position that maintenance, repair maintenance of that rock wall is the responsibility of City County of Honolulu, which is primarily due to his jurisdiction. Um I guess in short, while it's in forest management areas zones, our understanding is that the road was built into the forest zone. And as such, the city has built the roads. It is their responsibility to maintain that road. Otherwise, that is a, that's a summary of that inquiry and I'm available for any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Um Audrey, did you wanna follow up? Please go ahead. Uh Audrey, uh we're not getting a signal, an audio.
It's good now.
Oh, it's good now, okay. Um thank you for the report and then um so did you contact the city? Did you like in tennis, did you throw the ball back to the city?
My last understanding was uh we did convey it to the city. And I think thanks to the help of uh Tyler's office, it was conveyed to them at one point as well um in the past several months.
Okay, so the city's gonna follow up and do whatever they gotta do?
I can't speak on their behalf, but uh I can say that it was conveyed in from my side and through the assistance of uh council member, those and those handles.
Okay, so the council, is it the council members' um court and then so we'll work with them then and see what actually if any, the city's gonna take?
A possibility. I I can't actually say it's 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 the council members' court. Um if the city, the mayor's rep wants to take it, that's that's fine. I think the council member is assisting in the process. I think they have some um a formal referral process that they have.
Well, why don't we uh, why don't we let the council member chime in if if you'd like to?
Yeah, we're we're aware and and thanks, thanks to Will and the state for um clarifying this, so on our end, um we do have a riser going um and we can provide um you, Audrey, with a quick update on that uh via email. We'll see, see, Pat.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Audrey is that? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it'll it'll be another year or two before we get the things removed, but thank you all.
Thank you.
Sorry, and just checking on that, Audrey, I think there was just two um kind of inquiries on your on your question there. One was about the repair of the rock wall and it's kind of a, I guess, maintenance of not just the roadways or rock wall, but also the tree. I think we sent over to you uh back in July or so uh the state's Department of Forest and Aquatic Resources from G L R, D O F A have reviewed the stream or the tree removal and they've indicated that there is no obstruction to the stream and the tree is in natural condition that poses no risk in its current state and would be extraordinary expense to remove. The bid came in just over six sixty thousand dollars. And otherwise, there are data that see um a patch or removal of that tree at this time. If that was uh something that you were speaking of previously as well.
You guys were in and out, so we we here didn't get the whole speech. Can you repeat yourself, please?
Yes, I'll turn off my camera real fast. I'm getting my mic close to my mouth.
Um yeah, actually, William, it it came through to every, probably everyone else, but it came through to us uh clearly. So I I think maybe they're having a problem at the uh city location.
Yeah, um for both you, um William and uh council member, it was uh more uh clearing the debris than the big tree that was in the dream, whatever you call it, it was more that. The rock wall was kind of secondary, but I was more worried. The complaint I got was that if there's gonna be big rain again, you know, it might the tree stump in the river, the canal or whatever you call it, uh might be backed up. So that was the main concern. The tree stump, the debris in the in the river, the canal.
Okay, thank you very much. I think for the clarification, I think obviously with the uh upcoming or the previous rains, I mean potential rainy season, um that is a good thing to look at. Do you happen to know if the stream has, I guess, backed up or there was issues with the stream in in the most recent, I guess, rain period? Or previously since you last raised this issue, I think it was back in almost April or May of last year.
Okay, yeah, so I wasn't watching it. Somebody told me about it and sent me the picture, which picture was sent to you guys, so um I didn't hear anything otherwise, but it's still an issue that the area should be cleaned up, the debris. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any question, other questions from the board? Uh Paula?
Can you tell us what stream that is?
Audrey, if.
Uh, you know, I don't know, Paula. I have to go see.
Um if council member or William knows.
Location, name of stream?
Second, I'm trying to pull up my emails real fast. Uh.
Okay.
Have it somewhere right here. Sorry, one second. Getting close, getting close, getting. It's uh.
It's what?
Location.
I think you listed the address, uh you dropped the pin on three, six, five, six, New Wanda Poly Drive.
Oh, way up there, New Wanda Poly Drive, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very mu- uh, thank you very much. Um are there any other questions? Uh Paula?
I wanna know if the governor is in charge of all these departments. How in, how uh for DOT, how much power we can get from him to get some of these things settled on the Polly Highway with everything going on and worrying about other people getting worrying about ADA plus people getting killed. Um how much power can he give us? Because he wouldn't let us have helmets. He tabled it, the helmets, when he was in the legislature. So can we depend on him to get DOT on our side as citizens?
Well, if if you would take that message to the governor, that would be great.
Tell him Paula said from legacy of life, okay?
There you go.
Somebody else gets killed. Thank you.
You know, it I I can't add it this time and and you know, I I see Senator Rhodes right there, so I, you know, he had mentioned to me one time, it's like, just get the DOT to ask what they need. And 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 I don't wanna put Senator Rhodes on the spot, but as I recall, he said, um he will help get funding or whatever, do can, he'll do what he can do to help DOT find a way, whatever they, whatever they think that that will help, but to do something for the pedestrian's safety with DOT. Is that okay, Senator? Did I articulate your uh position okay?
Yes, essentially. I mean, I've already, I I'm sorry, it I I would, you want me to talk?
No, ye- yes, please. I don't wanna, well, I didn't wanna convey what you said without you having a chance to to say that was wrong or something or.
Hello, everyone. I um, no, I actually, we we got the money to put in several signalized crosswalks on the Polly at the unsignalized areas, which have a much higher compliance rate in terms of people of cars actually stopping. And DOT didn't wanna do it. I did take it to then Governor Ege directly and he didn't, he didn't wanna override his DOT. And so they let the money lapse, even though it wasn't, it was, it's a kind of a inside pool, but it was state money. It wasn't like we were taking away from their regular stream of federal money for state projects. They just didn't wanna do it. Part of that is, well, it it's hard to tell what it is because usually when you give an agency money, they're more than happy to spend it. Um I think part of it is that the Department of Transportation for years and decades, they don't like what they consider interference from the legislature or from anybody else. They think that they are, they're the ones tasked with running the highways and the transportation system. And no one else should have any say in it because no one else is an expert. So I. So I resent that, that attitude. And I voted against director sniffing because partly because of that and partly because I just don't think he's, his vision of what the transportation should be is, is all that great. And it just seems like more of the same that have gotten us into this situation that we're in now. So, I, but having said all that, I mean, if, if they came back with a, a solution that I think would work, I'm more than happy to put aside my personal feelings and get the money if I can. But what they've put out there, right, what, what they view as the solution is the speed bumps. And I just don't see that they work very well.
No, they don't.
I, I'm sorry, but thank you so much, Senator. I appreciate it. But before we get too far afield from our, our governor's representative report. William, if, if you would just take back the concerns that our board expresses about DOT putting together, are, are doing something, you know, for pedestrian safety. Because what they're doing so far as, as the senator suggested, does not seem really suitable for the problem and it's, it's a big problem. So if you would pass that on to the governor, we'd appreciate it. Are, and Senator will be with you in just one second, but are there any other questions or concerns from anybody for the governor's representative? Paula, please go ahead.
Thank you, Patrick, for that because somebody got to say something about what's going on.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you said because I'm in tears already. I don't want to see anyone else dead. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, William, and please pass on our concerns. We appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Senator, now we have, now we have up Senator Carl Rhodes.
Thanks very much. Hello, everyone again. Let's see. As a number of you have been having trouble with the feral pigs coming down out of the mountains and rooting around in your yards. I did speak to Roy, I know of the Oahu Pig Hunters Association a while back, and I know that Councilmember DeSantis Tam's office has been in touch with them as well. So they, my understanding is they've been working on border water supply property to to eradicate or contain feral pigs. There's also been some question about being, being able to get onto part of land and natural resources property to hunt. And I'm happy to help with that and I think I, I can. But somebody has to actually file for a license to do that. So I guess I would, I guess the message for me tonight is if you if, if you know people who are willing to do the hunting, I'm perfectly prepared to try to help them get the license from licenses from the, the. Uh, let's see, in response to Board Member Curish, she is concerned about the trash littering and blocking of new on a stream. I think that topic's been well covered. And what we just, what my office discovered was that, uh, the same thing that council member said was that it's, it's that part of the stream is city jurisdiction. Uh, turning to COVID, Department of Health reports nine hundred and fifty, fifty-two new COVID cases in the last seven day reporting period. Three deaths. I encourage you to keep up to date on your COVID shots as well as your flu shots. And if you're over sixty, there's now a vaccine for respiratory syncytial virus. RSV is the way it usually shows, which I just got myself and is a good idea to get to. Opening day, as someone mentioned, is tomorrow. It's gonna be a low key affair this year. This is not an election year. And also concerned about the money and the situation on Maui. But you're welcome to come down and, and witness both the House or the Senate. And I, some of us will be opening up our, our offices afterwards for reception, so mine will be open. Room two, two, eight, and you can come by for grinds and say hi. If you have any new bill ideas, get them, get them to me as soon as you possibly can. I'll try to get them in, but the deadline for filing bills is coming up very quickly. And that's pretty much all I have. My contact info is five, eight, six, six, one, three, zero, five, eight, six, six, one, three, zero. And the email is senroads@capital.y.gov. That's S E N R H O A D S at capital with an O dot y dot gov. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will add for the, the Pig Hunters Association. I think I was working with, our neighborhood worked with Brandon Mitsui now that he's moved on to the governor's office. I don't, I don't know if council member, you have anyone specific with the contacts with the group, but maybe if you could just reach out to him and, and let them know the senator's offer. Thank you. Okay, so questions from the board? I see Sylvia's hand up. Please, go ahead.
Paul, you know how to get in touch with me, so I will get in touch with my hunting friends and maybe we can help with that situation about the pigs. I'm not a pig hunter, but I hunt, but I'm not a pig hunter. So, um, but I, I do have many friends that are, you know, that will go out for bow and arrow and get their, you know, the pig.
Okay. Know someone, just have them contact these.
So you just contact me and I will give you names and numbers.
Okay.
Well, it, it, it probably would be Betty Sylvia if you call him. It might be work out better that way.
Oh, he calls me all the time. He knows how to reach me.
We'll figure it out. Don't worry. We're good.
Okay, Paula, please go ahead.
I want, I think the opportunity, we've tried three times to get the helmet bill passed for all those riding skateboards, motor scooters. Now, the bicycle has got it passed, so they have to wear helmets. I wanted to know if you could possibly do that, get a helmet bill going. And the other part is that our helmet give out will be this Saturday, coming Saturday at HPU for the students. We've given out thousands of helmets. We've tried anyway because of the deaths of people on skateboards. If you could get a helmet bill going, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm pretty sure that it's been introduced multiple times, but I, I'll, I'll check.
The last, the last go around, Josh Green, he, he tabled it, so.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Um, are there any other questions or concerns from the board for the Senator? Any questions or concerns from the community or anybody? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Senator. Good luck with the new session and look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Take care.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Next up, we have Representative Jenna Takunuchi, and I see her online, so I said Senator, I meant Representative, sorry. Representative, please go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you all. Just really quickly, some of the things that are on my list from the board. Sorry, no update yet about the started, no, no response yet from the department about the hurricane evacuation shelter, particularly New Uwano, New Uwano Elementary School. Or the crossing signs leading up to the school. We'll continue to follow up with the department and I'll let everyone know when we do get responses about those two things. With the concern about the school route from Oahu Lima Street to Poa Elementary School that I know a lot of the Papukalea kids are using to get to school. I did speak with DLNR about it since it's, the land is currently under their jurisdiction. They kind of consider that not land that they're looking to kind of do work on and they weren't, they, they had noted that they removed the bridge that was there. That's the concern for the pedestrian safety of the kids due to the state of dilapidation. And they weren't looking to reinstall it. They did say, though, that they were happy to give rights, easement rights or some other agreement to another state department. So I am following up with some of those other departments. DLNR suggested maybe DOE or DHHL, given that a lot of the kids from Papukalea are using that route. I did speak with DOE already. They kind of cited their limitation given their big backlog and issues with the lapsed projects that they might not have capacity to take on another project. I do have a meeting coming up with DHHL to discuss them possibly helping out. And I also put in a request with the Department of Transportation since it is kind of, you know, the kids getting to the school to see if maybe there was some way we could maybe utilize some safe routes to schools money. But I haven't heard back on that, but as soon as I have more updates, I will definitely let the board and everybody know. Yeah, as everyone mentioned, opening day is tomorrow. If you are coming by, feel free to stop by my office. We're just having kind of small snacks and everything, but would love to see anyone who's here. It's just open seating in the galleries, first come, first served, so might be a little crowded, but if you are in, you can get a gallery seat. You can also feel free to stop by my office. I'll let the staff know. We'll have the TV on and you can watch it from up there. And then finally, the public access room was hosting a series of classes for people who want to participate in a legislative session but may not be entirely familiar with it. There's just a couple more classes in the series left. There's one on Thursday, the eighteenth at six PM on Using Your Voice at the Legislature. And one on Thursday, January eighteenth at three PM on our legislative calendar and deadlines. It's a online Zoom lesson, so I'll put the link to sign up to get the Zoom link in the chat. And if you aren't familiar with the public access room, even if you miss or you can't attend or anything, they have a lot of great resources online to help you participate in the legislative session or feel free to call my office. My staff is always happy to track bills or give you kind of direction on what's going on. And that's kind of all I have. If there's any questions, happy to take them.
Thank you. Are there, I see Sylvia had her hand up first, so Sylvia, please go ahead.
Jenna, have you thought about a collaboration with the state departments and OHA? To
Oh.
Work on the Maybe OHA can help with that too because and maybe they could collaborate with those other departments, you know? And they might work it because maybe nobody wants to spend their money, but maybe we can get money from the other sources.
Oh, yeah. Thanks for that suggestion. I'll reach out to OHA as well. We, we just saw them in an info briefing, so yeah, that, that's a good.
Okay, thank you.
Alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian? Adrian?
I'm trying to unmute. No, Jen, I just wanted to say if you needed for NT20 or I to meet with DHHL with you to let them know that this is a community concern that we brought to your attention that has been longstanding. We're more than happy to do that. To, for, for the chair to understand that we're just, it's just an accident waiting to happen for one of the kids to get hurt over there, so.
Oh, thank you. I really appreciate that. Um, you know what? I, sorry, I don't have my calendar or anything open. Um, I'll send you guys the meeting date. And if you're available, you're, you're welcome to join as well. And I'll just let DHHL know that we're gonna also have some community members if you're able to make it. If not, if they seem like they need more push or follow up, maybe if you could just send them a note afterwards if you guys are already busy during that time.
Yeah, and, and as well as if we need to have community sign up petition, we're good at rallying a list of names. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Paula?
I want to know if Representative K would help us you, utilize us or whatever the word would be to use for neighborhood security, watch the schools. If you have any power to get us in for meetings as well as the neighborhood board. I know Patrick is gonna be shooting me pretty soon, but we need places to meet. We're now just doing Zooms and we're not even getting to see the community, so if you could work it out with some of these places for us to go neighborhood board meeting, twelve, and for neighborhood security watch, because we have no place to go and we're all volunteers. And we have no money, unless you can get us some money. We already got the flash.
What location are you, are you looking to me at New Uwano Elementary?
For, for the neighborhood security watch, New Uwano Elementary would be great because that's where we used to meet. Which was wonderful, just parking. And it's good for the disabled. And the other one would be our regular meeting place that Mr. Smith has been trying to get at the school. Since we're taxpayers, I don't know why we can't meet there. And now I know it's COVID and all that kind of thing, but something should be able to be worked out for us so we don't have to be doing Zoom all the time or WebEx or whatever they call it.
Is the issue, so you've approached both the schools and they've said they're not opening
Patrick would know that. I don't know.
Yeah, we, we were supposed to talk about this a little later, but
Oh, sorry, sorry.
No, 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 that's okay, but essentially everything goes, all those requests, my understanding is go, go through the DOE now. Each of the schools don't handle it individually. And for the, the Poa Elementary, they said we cannot, they do not have capacity. I think it's based upon cleaning. You know, janitorial services, they don't have capacity for us to meet. And I looked into David, it's not Kalakaua. What, what's the other elementary, the middle school down here? And it was pricey for us, at least on the neighborhood board to meet over, you know, every month at that place. I think it was like two sixty or something like that. So that's why we, I opted not to do that this month. But, so I guess, maybe if the Department of Education could be told that it, there might be some community groups that might, maybe could get a discount. You know, and things like the neighborhood board or neighborhood security watches, things like that, because you want to encourage those type of organizations. I understand they have expenses too, and I, I wouldn't ask them, you know, to, to take out of their budget, but you know, if, if you want to pursue this, that would be the only thing I could see is, is just to encourage them to open up their campuses or their facilities for organizations that really do bolster the overall community.
Sure, I can reach out to the contact I have at DOE to see what's going on, if they kind of plan to update any of their policies or anything, or what, what's going on on their end about that.
Okay, thank you. Paula, did you want to follow up?
At New Wano School, I tried. They wanted sixty dollars an hour. And if the man who's the janitor stays longer to close up and everything, he wanted another sixty, so that would be a hundred and twenty for a meeting.
Okay.
Now, I don't know if that's changed because of what DOE is going through with cleaning. But it was, we wouldn't, I estimated a hundred and twenty even for neighborhood security watch.
Okay.
Well, if he can do that like we used to have in the olden days, that would be great.
Well, if you just want to follow up and maybe get a little clarity, because I'm a little unclear. I, we usually, I have to go through the neighborhood board office, so I, I guess Paula goes directly. But if you, it's, if you just want to find out, maybe clarify and see if there's some way that they could assist us, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, I'll follow up.
Thank you.
The other one, the other one was with the school with the shelter. After hearing with, with the dam and everything possibly, I think you probably won't have work with the New Wano School anymore because if, if they're doing the dam and something happens and we'd be washed down the mountain anyway, so you might look at the pros and the cons on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sylvia?
Oh, well, Patrick just about said everything that I was gonna say. But, you know, we used to have, we used to be able to work directly with the schools that we used. And and we had really a good deal because some of us on the board used to volunteer at the school, which they needed too, so we kind of helped each other out. And that's how we had gotten Pa'oh School at a very dis- I think we were paying like fifty dollars a month, no, just for the janitor, just for the janitor to clean up the place after that, but they didn't charge it except for the cleaning fee. So I don't know if we can ever go, go back to something like that, because the Pa'oh School maintenance person lives right there on Lico Lane, right next to the school, so I don't know.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, we're kind of running a little tight on time, but so maybe in, in, in summary, if, if if you could talk to DOE and maybe they could allow a little bit more negotiation directly with the schools. My understanding is they have a district-wide policy as opposed to allowing us to approach the schools directly and maybe getting a better deal. But anyway, if you, if and maybe getting a better deal. But anyway, if you, if maybe you could clarify that for us, we'd appreciate it.
Yes.
Are there any other um, questions or concerns from the community or the board or the representative? Hearing none. Thank you very much. We appreciate it and uh, look forward to hearing from you next month. So thank you. And good luck on the, the session. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any other elected officials here this evening that wish to be heard? Hearing seeing none, we can move on to board business. I would note that during board business, we do ask for all our board members who are capable of uh, uh, video feedback. Please to turn on their video. It is required under the sunshine laws to have a majority of those. Thank you very much. First up on our, uh, our business, and as I say, I, I kind of messed up on the agenda. So it's a little quirky, but we can make it through here, I think. Uh, is a request to serve on the Oahu MPO, which is the metro planning organization. And just basically, I'm not sure exactly what they do, but they um, they serve as the uh, they coordinate transportation planning for the two parts of Oahu, which is considered uh, Honolulu and Kailua-Kanioei. I assume they go out on the other parts of the island, but I'm not positive. So would any, and I, I think that entails like a meeting a month. Would anybody be willing to serve in that capacity? Okay.
Patrick, do you have any information on meeting times?
No, I do not, but I can get those to you if, if, and then I can talk to you separately if, if, if that would be something. And if you can't do it, then so be it.
I was going to ask a question too. My question is, in that transportation planning, does that include the bus?
I don't know. I don't know. If you, if you go, they, they don't really have a lot of information, uh, details, exactly what they do. I suppose you'll have to dig deep. The actual website is literally awahu mpo.org.
Okay, thank you.
But why don't you, you know, why don't?
I'm not interested in serving. Okay.
Okay. Okay. Well, Mike, I'll, I'll reach out to you and, and if, if anybody else would like to do that, please email me. Oh, I, I see Ray G. Ray G., do you have, do you know or?
I'm just going to explain that it's um, the city and the state get together and they have this of projects that request funding from the federal government, FTA and federal highways, because I used to be one of the transportation planners. And this list has to go through three committees, which is the CAC Citizens Advisory Committee. And board members can sit on that committee and review the list and give comments, um, whether they like the projects or not. And it's like funding Salt Lake Boulevard construction to the rail, anything relating to roadway projects that um, federal funds are coming from. And then there's the um, technical advisory committee, which is made up of, you know, the planners and the bosses in the city and state. And then lastly is the um, CAC, oh, policy, policy board, and that's the legislators and all of that. So I think predominantly it's good that to have representation from the neighborhood board on the CAC or Citizens Advisory Committee.
Right.
So let everybody know, you know, that this project is proposed for funding and do we agree and you know, all that kind of stuff. And, and then you can see what the outcome is at the end. And it's all in the website. So it's called statewide, STIP statewide transportation improvement program. Stip in the tip and then the transportation improvement program. Then there's a 2020 year or 2030, 2040 long term plan and a short term plan. Those are the short term. Yeah.
Thank you, Ray. Um, so if anybody's interested, please just email me and, and we'll go from there. And Mike, I can email you separately, uh, since you have a little bit of interest and we'll go from there.
Unfortunately, I just checked the calendar. The CAC meeting times is 2:30 to 3:30 PM on Wednesdays. And that's definitely, it's out for me. Can't do that.
Okay. Well, if, if, if anyone would be interested, please let me know. I mean, I might be able to do it, but if anybody else would like to do it, please.
They can't get across the Poly Highway.
Yeah. Um, next up, we have a presentation by the Board of Water Supply. And is there our representatives from the board, BWS, ready?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, um, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Everest Akama with the Board of Water Supply. Also joining me this evening is um, Michael Domian, also from the Board of, Board of Water Supply, as well as Aaron Kreitzer with HDR, who is serving as our uh, prime design consultant for our neighbor, uh, New Uwano Reservoir Number One Dam Improvements Project. Uh, the BWS has recently um, published a draft environmental assessment with the, with the state. And um, we're here tonight to give a, a brief um, presentation on our project. And Aaron with HDR will um, be presenting that. So I'll pass it over to Aaron.
All right, thanks Everest. I'm going to share my screen now. Uh, can y'all see that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Yeah. So this is, uh, we're talking about New Uwano Reservoir Number One Dam Improvements. Uh, just a quick agenda. We'll go over the purpose of the project, uh, the project steps and the analysis that has been done. Uh, the design of the project and then our anticipated schedule. So the purpose of the project uh, is to bring New Uwano Reservoir Number One Dam and its appurtenances into compliance. Uh, and this is driven by the, the DLNR Dam Safety Program Rules and Regulations. And it is included as the Hawaii Administrative Rules, uh, Chapter 13 dash 190.1. And we also, uh, were to confirm the hydrology and the hydraulic inputs into the reservoir. And then provide improvements to the actual embankment, the spillway, uh, the spillway channel, uh, the outlet works and uh, monitoring equipment. So just a quick location map of where the reservoir is. It's about two miles up um, Poly Highway from, from the H1 freeway. Quick history on the reservoir itself, uh, was constructed in the late night, 1890s. Uh, primary purpose was for water supply and hydroelectric power production. Uh, the power, the hydroelectric plant was decommissioned in the 1930s. And then in the early 1960s, uh, the reservoir use was actually changed um, from impounding water to be primarily a stormwater detention um, facility only. And just a quick overview of uh, what the um, site looks like. On the left there, you can see the outline in blue is the actual reservoir footprint. Uh, it's about um, five acres in size. The red line represents the existing um, earthen spillway channel. And then the, the, the yellow line there represents uh, the, the crest of the dam embankment. That's about 610 feet long and 12 feet wide. So the project steps and analysis that's, that's been done. Um, so we did an analysis on the hydrology uh, and to optimize a hydraulic flow model. And this uh, was to confirm the contributing basin areas um, and the rainfall model. Uh, we determined a new embankment and spillway elevations. And this was, these were done in conjunction with the hydraulic modeling. And then as Everest mentioned, uh, environmental assessment's been completed and submitted. Uh, and there was associated studies with that, including a historic architecture survey and then archaeological assessment. So for the hydrology and hydraulics, uh, we determined the contributing area, uh, you know, rain, rainfall that uh, flows into the reservoir. There are actually two sub-basins that, that contribute. In total, there are about 160 acres. And this is the outline in red there. Uh, the current reservoir capacity, um, at the spillway level, currently it's about a hun, or 13 and a half million gallons. And then at the crest, it's about 20 and a half million gallons. And so this is uh, some depictions of uh, the design. Um, you can see in red here, it represents the uh, embankment um, crest. And we're going to be widening that to uh, 15 feet all along the, uh, its pathway. We're going to be including a 10-foot um, maintenance access bench on the downstream embankment. And that's depicted in, in green there. And then um, the embankment slopes, the upstream and the downstream slopes um, will be regraded uh, so that they um, are in compliance with the, the DLNR regulations. Uh, on this slide, um, we've got a new concrete um, spillway and spillway channel. So the spillway itself um, is, is 65 foot wide and it's a concrete weir. Uh, the channel is a 12-foot wide um, rectangular concrete channel, uh, 12 foot on the inside. And then the spillway itself uh, flows uh, to energy dissipating controls before leaving the property. And those include uh, rip rap blanket, which you know, rip large rock blanket uh, at the spillway exit. And then some uh, just energy dissipating baffle blocks about halfway up the spillway channel. Uh, the third main element, element is an outlet works structures. And the outlet works uh, includes um, a pipe at the uh, the low level of the reservoir. So this 30-inch diameter discharge pipe is going to be um, going through the embankment. Uh, we've got a concrete intake structure that's going to include a uh, a metal trash rack that'll keep out um, debris from, from clogging the pipe. And then we've got a concrete outlet structure that will, you know, take any flows um, that, that come into the reservoir through the pipe and direct them appropriately um, you know, off, off the property. So our project schedule, um, is, as Everest mentioned again, the environmental assessment uh, was posted um, last week. There were 30-day comment period, which ends uh, February 7. And then we're planning to advertise for bids uh, in April of this year. And then open bids and award the project in May of this year. And then uh, we'll issue a notice to proceed uh, anticipating the first quarter of 2025. And then um, our anticipated construction duration is going to be roughly 14 months. And that is, is my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, if you would, uh, stop sharing the screen though, just so we can see, see everybody. Thank you. If you're done. Oh, no worries, no worries. Do we have any questions uh, from the board? Uh, concerned, Audrey?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, is it possible for you to send us the presentation materials?
Um, yeah, I, I actually I have that, so I can uh, make that available. I'm sorry. What I'll do is uh, pass it on to Rachel, our new NA and have her put it on our Google, um, our, our Google Drive page.
Okay. And then just one more question. So if you're going to open bids in May, uh, why would it take so long for you guys to issue the NGP?
Uh, we do have um, various uh, permitting and approvals required for the contractor to start their work. Um, we've been finding that a lot of those permitting and approvals um, have been taking longer than expected from uh, past projects uh, for the contractor to obtain. So we kind of built in um, uh, that kind of a longer timeline to account for those um, anticipated delays that we've been currently experiencing with other uh, projects.
Okay, um, I understand. You guys are not exempt from the building permit process?
Uh, currently, uh, we are um, exempt from the building permit process. Um, our, this particular project does not require a building permit. However, there are other um, approvals that are, would be currently pending um, for the contractor to obtain once it, the project has been awarded.
Okay. So, so don't say building permits then. I'm sorry to be clear. So is this damn old enough where you have, have to go to SHPT?
Uh, yes, this project is um, gonna be uh, under review from uh, SHPT as well as other uh, various uh,
Right.
Departments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray G., yes, I think is next.
Thank you. Um, was this the dam that was overflowing and that the city sent out a notice a while, like a couple of years ago that we had to evacuate our homes? Was this the dam that needed improvements?
Everest, I'll go ahead and take that Everest. Yeah. Hi, Ray. Captain Pachinui, uh, head of communications for BWS. Yes, back in 2018, this is the one, it never overflowed, but can, but it became very close to overflowing. And Ernie made the call along with Hiro Toya at the time uh, with DM to uh, do that press conference and to alert the entire community, because uh, we, we were very concerned. Luckily that, we've never gotten that close again. So thank God for that. And these improvements will help uh, manage that better. So thank you.
So we really need this project.
Yes, we do. Well, the state is mandating it. We don't have a choice. We have to do it, but we do need it as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sylvia? And then Paula, I'll get to you.
Let's see. Okay. Um, on, on this dam for this project, was the residents that live on the downside of the reservoir in that subdivision notified that this is happening? So they could at least maybe have come on our board meeting to see what you presented?
Uh, yes, um, we did send out uh, notification letters uh, during the pre-consult, pre-consultation um, um, stage of the year. Um, we also recently um, are in the process of sending out uh, notification letters of the posting of the draft environmental assessment. So um, currently I'll counting the ones that are recently being processed. Uh, there's a total of two letters that were sent out to um, residents that were directly Makai of our project site.
Okay, they received notice. That's all I was concerned about, whether the residents received notice. Thank you.
Yes, uh, we did send out notices. Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I think Paula, Paula, go ahead.
I don't want to take too much time, but can you give us exactly the location? Because some people don't know what number one, number two, number three, number four is. On which side of the highway, blah, blah, blah. Is it near Pu'u Le Hua or?
Posh. So I guess the closest landmark would be uh, Oahu Country Club. And our uh, site is uh, right adjacent to that between um, the Poly Highway and the country club.
Okay, um, that's where all the homeless are then, right? So I live across the street, so I just wonder. Thank you.
I think that's a little further up. Um, yeah, this is the reservoir, you know, there, there are houses right that have but the reservoir. And then you have the maintenance shack of OCC. So I think the homeless are a little further up the road.
They're up a little bit.
More across from Wood Street and such on the other side, so.
Correct, correct. But um, I, I'm glad to hear this because the last time when the dam, they couldn't close the door over there, a lot of people didn't know and they lost a lot of different things in the mud. So if there is anything that might be um, critical to the area, if you folks maybe let them really know early. Thank you. I don't think there's any fish on that side. Coy and uh, flower beds, et cetera.
Thank you. Uh, Sylvia?
Oh, I, I just want to say, this is, that, that's why I kind of knew where this was. It's, the reservoir is actually between Old Country Road and the Wai'au Kanaka subdivision, where they used to have that strip of um, point Setias that used to be. That's this ru, number one is, right? And then the subdivision, because behind of all the bushes is the dam.
Correct.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Are, are there any other uh, questions from anybody for uh, the Board of Water Supply regarding the transportation? I mean, the presentation, excuse me. Hearing none. Thank you very much for coming out this evening. Thank you for informing our community. We really appreciate your, uh, you doing that and it's very helpful for us and all the residents here. So thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Catherine especially. So thank you. So.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Moving on, uh, next up, we have our uh, Vincent Lee from the J.C.'s. I, I didn't hear back from him, so I wonder if he is here this morning. I mean, this morning, this evening. I mean, this morning, this evening. Uh, okay, maybe we can do that next month, which is good anyway. I I so I'll reach out to him. So next up, I'm sorry, I have to go to the light. I apologize. Uh, next up, we have the route, uh, bus route one twenty-one and uh other related transportation issues. Um, we did talk about the A D A issues earlier. Did anyone have anything they wanted to add? If not, we can move on. Um, we have the traffic uh calming resolution. And I don't know if this was really, if if everybody saw this, it was hopefully in our Google Drive. It regarded uh installing these um uh, what do they call it? Um, rectangular rapid flashing beacons. And I'll show everyone real quick what that means. Uh, is everybody, everybody can see the um can see that, I hope. And it's just that little flashing sign. So I don't know if everyone had a chance to read the uh resolution. We really should all read it. Uh, but it 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 talks about, it uh actually asks the state to implement this type of solution for pedestrian issues. And I don't know what the feeling is of the community, whether we as a board want this or want to hear what D O T has may um propose or what action we want to take. So if anybody wants to cl- chime in, this is the time. Mike.
Yeah, I think from what I've seen, these these would help the problem. It certainly makes pedestrians more visible. Uh, however, I think if we endorse doing something like this, it's a lesser solution than getting in actual crossing lights, which I think is the right solution for this. So it's it's an improvement. It would help with safety, but I don't think it's a complete solution. I don't think it's the best solution for it.
Okay, well said. Any um I see Sylvia's hand up?
Well, I am, I'm happy that Mike said that because that was wh- where my thoughts were too, that if we accepted this, would they say that, you know, we wouldn't be able to get what we really wanted? And um, so thi- so this is where that's that was my thought too, Mike, so thank you. Um. I didn't see the, I'm sorry, but I did not read the resolution. I did not see it. And from between the tenth and the.
Oh, Sylvia, um, we're getting a little bit of feedback. I don't know if you have your phone by your computer or speaker, just if if you can turn that off. But go ahead, please. I mean, we can hear you. You're just getting a little feedback.
I don't know if you're having feedback. Oh, um, but anyway. What's happening? Am I still having feedback?
It just stopped, so so go ahead.
Because I turned off the 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 hand waving hand. But anyway, um. So I didn't have a chance to look at the resolution, only because I was having computer problems between the tenth and the fifteenth, and I finally got it cleaned out. I thought I had a virus. So I erased anything that came that didn't look right. So anyway, that was my problem. So if you can just email me the resolution, I'll read it.
Why don't I suggest, um, I'll put this information from the Department of Highway Administration regarding what it is. It's not a lie. But and then the actual resolution, I'll put that on the Google Drive because we already want to put the presentation of the Border Water Supply. And that way I'll email, I can email the link to everybody, you know, if if they don't have it, just just so everyone can look at it. But what I'm hearing from the board is that maybe it would behoove us to wait and and have this as a at the very minimum, a back pocket possibility if if D O T just doesn't want to do anything. That's something we consider. But yeah, it might be, uh, what I'm hearing is the board probably feels it's a little premature at this point, and let's hear what the D O T hopefully with the governor and, you know, and and I I think, was it Tyler who said he was working with Ed Sniffin or Sniffin or or somebody? Uh, no, I think it was uh Director uh kind of uh Gashiro that said um she was working with with them to come up with some sort of proposal. So or if there are no objections, I I think we, the the consensus seems to be just to hold off on this. Is that wrong? Does anyone want to add anything differently or? Okay, okay, so we're cons- oh, Paula, did you want to say something or? Are you muted, Paula?
I agree, and I think we should get what we want and what we wanted in from the beginning before somebody else gets killed.
Well, at least I think for the first time, I mean, hearing a little bit of at least optimism that the D O T is being lobbied. You know, uh, whereas before they they seemed to ignore it, so I think that's a positive sign. So we'll just see what happens. Okay, thank you. So hearing, oh, Paula, did you want anything else or?
I don't want to see any more of those raised sidewalks put in. They're just, uh, no one's, they don't care. We need to have it like California. You have the raised sidewalk, and there's a hole at the other end, so when you go over, they get stuck in the hole. We need to make business. We don't need anyone else killed.
Okay. Um, okay, any further comments? Okay, hearing none. Um, we can move on to our next item, which is uh the early traffic, I mean, the early trash collection. Did anyone want to add anything? I I just kept that on the agenda. Was there any updates they wanted to provide? Okay, hearing none. Um, next up, we can go to the Papalaya, uh, Papakalea Community Concerns. And Adrian, I usually give our reports, so do you want to report anything? Uh, you're muted, Adrian.
I'm working on getting unmuted. No, the only thing I wanted to report is that um we will have our annual health fair at Lincoln Elementary on March second from two to two. Um, yeah, and so that's it. For us, other than that, we're we're quite busy and nice holidays. And once again, we thank Tyler for uh working on getting the speed humps in front of our park. Joining us, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and and if you, if you uh need the boards, um, any assistance from the board in that regard, please let us know. So that's that's a very worthy, I think I hopefully I can, everyone will agree, that's a very worthy thing. So hopefully we can help you if you need it. So just let us know. Thank you. Or or well, are there any questions about that? I assume none. So uh, next up is just our meeting locations. We talked about it a little. I investigated it. And um, we did have a a very, we can't get POA because I think they they don't have the cleaning staff. One of the other issues is we do have to work, like I work through the um, what I do is is suggest something, and then it goes to uh the Neighborhood Commission Office. And then they have, my understanding is they have an individual that then kind of reaches out. And the processes, everything is through the D O E. I guess we'll get a little clarification next month from uh from Jenna, a representative Takamuchi. But that's my understanding how it works. And so we haven't really found anything suitable. Uh, one of the issues uh that that I kind of talked about before was whether we just wanted to have a one-time meeting, in-person meeting where everyone tries. I mean, we're always going to have an in-person place, at least at the Papa uh downtown by um, what is it?
Apalama.
Apalama. Yeah, sorry. So we're always going to have that available. But I was thinking that at least we could do one meeting in the district to kind of get everyone together. I think that would be a great thing. So if if I I'll continue to pursue options. I haven't looked into New Wano, so I'll 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 see if we can do that. I know a little bit about it, but I I'll keep going. So does anyone have any comments or questions?
Um, Patrick?
Sylvia, go ahead.
Um, you know, you you checked into Kauai and La Cora School too, right?
Uh, which one is that? I'm sorry.
La Cora in middle school.
Yes, and it it was, it was really expensive.
Oh, yeah, but another thing is, what about Hunga G?
No, I didn't look into that, so I can I can look into that.
They had a meeting room because that would be easy to get to and and talk to.
Okay.
And I don't know if the temple side has a meeting room or the school side has the meeting room. You know, there's two sides.
Good. Um, why don't I talk to you outside the meeting? If anyone has any particular suggestions, please email me, and we can pursue those. Okay, thank you. So uh, last off is our approval of minutes. Now, unfortunately, because I sent out the wrong agenda, I, this has the old minutes. But I would ask at this time, were there any amendments to our November minutes? Um, we we can't, we probably shouldn't take a vote, and I I I'll probably stick to that and say, but if if there are none, then at least we can remember that for next month, and we can quickly review it. So we will put that off to next month. That includes our business. And we can move on. Is there any other business? Hearing none, we'll move on to our announcements, and the next meeting will be February twentieth. Again, this will likely be the same type of situation where uh we will have in in-person downtown. And uh we'll do the electronic meeting for I imagine the bulk of us until we find a place. And are, does anyone want to make an announcement? Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I'll con- this concludes the meeting and adjourn the meeting, so thank you. Thank you very much. Little buggy ride tonight, so sorry.
Happy New Year.
Take care. Happy New Year, everybody. Have a great month.
Happy New Year.